And we are now live. The meeting of the City of Socorro Planning and Zoning Commission is set to begin. First and foremost, the city would like to thank everyone and ask for your patience during this difficult time we have been presented with. Everyone, please remember to silence any electronics to avoid sound interruption. No disruptive behavior or outbursts will be tolerated and violators are subject to call disconnection and possible prosecution. In accordance with section 418.016 of the Texas Government Code and by order of the Office of the Governor issued March 16, 2020, the Planning and Zoning Commission of the City of Socorro will broadcast the meeting scheduled today, Tuesday, September 15, 2020, at 5:30 PM from City Hall Chambers located at 860 Rio Vista Road to Coral, Texas, via telephone conference and live stream in order to advance the public health goal and practice social distancing to slow the spread of the coronavirus COVID-19. The public that signed up and any presenters will be called upon by the presiding officer during the meeting to speak during the public comment or their agenda item during the meeting following Government Code 551.042. La reunión de la Comisión de Planificación y Zonificación de la Ciudad de Socorro se va a comenzar. Primeramente queremos darle las gracias y pedimos su paciencia durante estos momentos críticos que enfrentamos. Favor de poner en silencio todo equipo electrónico para evitar la interrupción de sonido. No se va a tolerar ningún tipo de comportamiento perjudicial o revoltoso. A quien nos siga estas reglas su llamada será desconectada y puede ser infraccionado. De acuerdo con sección 418.016 del Código del Gobierno de Texas y por orden de la Oficina del Gobernador anunciada el 16 de marzo de 2020/20, la Comisión de Planificación y Zonificación de la Ciudad de Socorro transmitirá su reunión hoy 15 de septiembre de 2020 a las cinco y media desde la sala del Consilio localizada en 860 Rio Vista Road, Socorro, Texas, por medio de teléfono y será transmitida en vivo para tomar medidas preventivas para prevenir la propagación de la enfermedad del virus Corona COVID-19 a los demás y por la seguridad del público. El público y los presentadores serán anunciados por el oficial conduciendo la reunión para poder hablar durante la sección de comentario público o después de la discusión del artículo de la agenda por cual se apuntaron siguiendo las reglas del Gobierno 551.042.
Mr. Arroyos, you want to call to order?
This is the Socorro Planning and Zoning Commission, September 15, 5:30, 6 PM. We call this meeting to order.
Item number one, call... Item number two, establishment of quorum, I'm sorry. Ernest Gómez. David Estrada.
Here.
Arturo Lafuente.
Here.
Andrew Arroyos.
Here.
Enrique Cisneros.
Present.
We have quorum with five commissioners present. Item number three, notice to the public, open forum. Mayela, did anyone sign up to speak?
There's no one signed up for public comment.
Item number four, consent agenda. Consider and take action on the approval... Do we have a motion to approve?
They approve.
Second.
I have motion to approve by Mr. Arroyos, second by Mr. Cisneros. Oh. I'm going to take a vote. Ernest Gómez. Ernest Gómez.
Mr. Gómez, I need you to unmute.
Ernest Gómez. Is absent. David Estrada.
Yes.
Arturo Lafuente.
Yes.
Andrew Arroyos.
Yes, ma'am.
Enrique Cisneros.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion carried with four commissioners. Yes. Item number five. Consider and take action on the preliminary and final plat approval for Maria Reina Piñeda subdivision being Lot 10, Block 2, San Isidro subdivision at 221 Revelles Way for a lot split.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This application is for a lot split. I'm going to put it on the screen. So this property is located about a thousand feet east from Alameda. The property is owned by Maria Reina Piñeda. It's at 221 Revelles. They're proposing to split the property in half, the one you see on the screen. They're proposing to leave 11,080 square feet on Lot 1. That's about a quarter of an acre and Lot 2 would have exactly the same size. According to the flood insurance rate maps, this property is in Zone X. The planning and zoning department recommends approval to allow the applicant to record the plat as proposed. They're still pending the engineer review fees. The plans have been sent to our consultant for review. That is the only thing that is pending. Their intention is to subdivide to build a second house in the property. I don't know if you have any questions. I believe Mr. Nevárez is also on the line. If you have any questions for the applicant, he's representing the owner of the property. The owner is his daughter.
Yes.
Mr. Nevárez, let me subdivide this... Was it this property or was it this development?
It's only a lot split. It's owned by Maria Piñeda, but Mr. Nevárez is the one who is representing her. It's her dad or her father, the one who is on the line. And he only speaks Spanish. No sé si tengan preguntas para el señor Nevárez que está en el teléfono.
Sí, aquí estamos. Pues no, lo más si todo está aprobado. Ese es mi pregunta.
Señor Nevárez, se me hace que no se le entendió la pregunta. ¿Puede repetirla?
Muy bien, correcto. Si está aprobado, este, la división del terreno. Esa es mi pregunta.
No, apenas lo estamos presentando para la aprobación. Estamos presentando el plano preliminar y el final.
Aquí voy a esperar.
I'm going to put on the screen the... The preliminary plat that he submitted. This is the preliminary plat. Let me just rotate it here real quick. So as you can see, they're going to have bonding areas. They're proposing a new house. There's already an existing house on the site. It has all the information that is required. And now I'm going to put the final plat on the screen so you can also see that one as well. Do you see that on the screen? This is how they're proposing to subdivide the property. This is the final plat. I don't know if you have any questions.
Everything's been approved except they're just pending the signatures on the milars?
No, sir. This is the preliminary and the final plat. This is the first time that we present this to the board, but we're presenting both plats at the same time.
Okay.
And like I said, it's only for a lot split. Do you have any questions?
Why are they both being presented together, the preliminary and the final?
The reason because this is considered a minor plat. That way it'll save time and we don't have to put it on another meeting. So just for the purpose of saving time, it's considered a minor plat.
Got your keys? The keys.
It's open.
There's a keys in it?
You need the keys?
So do you have any other questions?
Yeah, can you zoom out to take a look at the whole subdivision?
Yes, sir. Let me put it on the screen real quick. And also let me just, what I'm going to do here is I'm going to turn on this layer. As you can see, the properties around this one have already been subdivided before. This is the only one that is pending in this little block. There's other subdivisions on San Isidro. As you can see. And this is the location. This is where Alameda is. And it's about a thousand feet from Alameda, right off of Episo Road.
So there's, she's, there's three properties that are abutting his properties already that have been subdivided, right?
Yes, sir. That's correct. And he wants to do the same thing.
I don't have any questions if anybody else does.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion? Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I make a motion to approve?
My second.
And who seconded? I'm sorry.
Andrew.
Andrew, thank you. I have a motion to approve made by Mr. David Estrada and second by Mr. Andrew Arroyos. I'm going to take a vote.
I'm sorry. Do we have to make a motion with the staff recommendations or is that just I call them out?
Well, actually the staff recommendations are just for your information that we're still pending the fees for the engineer review. The plans are still being reviewed by our consultant. And that's something that we'll just enforce, make sure that it gets addressed before we get the milars.
I'm going to take a vote. Ernest Gómez. David Estrada.
Yes.
Arturo Lafuente.
Yes.
Andrew Arroyos.
Yes, ma'am.
Enrique Cisneros.
Yes, ma'am.
I have motion with four commissioners approved. Item... Mr. Gómez? Mr. Gómez?
Yes.
Okay, I have motion carries with five commissioners approved. Item number six, consider and take action on the preliminary, on the final plat approval for Villas del Socorro subdivision being all of tracks 13B and 18, Block 12, and tracks 1, 3A, 3C, Block 27 Socorro, grant for a new development.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This application here is the request for the final plat. This application was presented to you last week in the special meeting. You approved the preliminary plat. Today, because this is a major subdivision, we're presenting the final plat. So... I'm going to show you here on the screen this... This property is Villas del Socorro. If you recall, the only thing that is different is that they added 30 lots to this property. Today, they are presenting the final plat. The improvements are still under construction. Let me put it on the screen, the final plat, so you can... See it. Okay, there you go. This is the final plat. So they didn't change anything from the preliminary to the final. The only thing that is different is now it has the dedication block on the site. This is where the city will collect the signatures. The only thing that we staff is recommending that because the improvements, the roadways and improvements are still under construction, we're recommending some kind of security to the city just to ensure that the improvements will be complete. So I don't know if you have any questions for this. Also, Mr. Escobar is on the line. He is the developer. If you have any questions for him as well.
I have a question, Mr. Job. This question's for you. When I was reviewing it from last week's meeting, one of the things that we had discussed was that the funds that were going to be set aside for parks was going to be dedicated to the park that is adjacent to this development. My question is, when I was looking at the map, we were, I guess we were talking about how close it was to this development. When I was looking at the map, am I understanding the map correctly that they, it's, that's a canal separating the development from the park?
This one right here, yes, that is correct. There is a canal. And I don't know if you, this is the, this is a drain and then there's a canal that crosses. There is access from here into the drain. I don't know if you recall on one of the meetings that we had earlier this year, we were talking about creating walking trails and stuff like that. This is one of the ones that could potentially have those trails that we talked about. So there will be access from this subdivision into the park. However, that does require coordination with the Water Improvement District, make sure that we have the appropriate licensing to be allowed to cross.
And being that this is the final plat, would we get that now? Would we get that later as the bigger projects for the trails? When would we secure that?
Okay, well, you could make a recommendation to council to secure access to the park. That's something that you can definitely recommend.
And can we make it with the caveat that if the pathway is not secured, that... That the park... Hypothetically speaking, that if the pathway is not secured, then we, then with the caveat that the park land and the park itself be built for the development if pathway isn't secured?
Yes, that is correct. Remember that for this, for the size of this development, they were required, they were required to provide about an acre approximately, one acre of park. If that's something that you want to recommend to council to look into, either pay the park fees or secure the access or provide the park. Remember, there's going to be eight acres of open space. It's still going to be owned by the developer, so there's still room for... If there's any change in plans in the future.
Very good. I guess I... One is I want to echo at least my opinion about how the goal is that we're going to get a much bigger space for future use if we come up with the funds. So I don't want, I want to make sure that I make that point, you know, to make that point is or define that point as much as I can. I guess the other point I want to make is that until that land and that park is developed... I guess the other point I wanna make is that until that land and, and that park is developed, that eight acres could be four, that eight acres could be one acre, right? In the future, because again, we, we don't hold, um, ownership of that acreage today, and we, we don't know when we will, right?
Yes, that's correct. So I don't know if you have any more questions?
Uh, I guess, I'll, I'll, I'll ask Mister, Miss Escobar, is it Mister, uh, Escobedo, right?
Escobar.
Escobar, excuse me, my apologies for that, Mister Escobar, um, i- if, if we made the caveat where we back, where we would ask that pathway be secured to that park to confidently, uh, approve the final plat, so that these residents have easy access to that park, how difficult do you think getting that would be?
We have a good working relationship with the irrigation district, but I don't think that would satisfy my requirement of paying the percentage or giving you the land. That would just be like a favor, which I don't have an issue working on. But remember, I have to give one or two things to the city. Either I have to give you a one acre park, which at this point would be redundant because you have one next door, and, or I have to give you the money. So what you might wanna recommend is that the money that's allocated by us, because we did not build a park, would be used at, at this area in the future time in order to make that entryway, you know, more accessible or nicer with trees or pavers or something that would help out that area. But that's only my recommendation, I, I, I have only have to do one or two things, either pay you or build a park, and I'll be happy to help you with the, the granting of the access, that's not an issue.
So, I guess I'll, I'll ask my question again, do, do you, do you think you would have a hard time getting that, that access?
No, sir.
If, if you want?
No, sir, I would not have a hard time doing it.
Okay. Um, again, uh, I'm, I'm really glad that we got to see this again so soon, um, that was one thing that was on my mind, um, when, when I, when I was reviewing it after, after our meeting, was I think it's, it's really advantageous to, to take advantage of, of a park that close. And then also working with Mister Escobar, you know, hopefully that we, it was, we can work together with the city and, and him as a developer to, to use those eight acres, uh, to something that's beneficial to him and to the city. Um, I just feel in good conscience that, that, because again, we are planning to, um, we're, we're, we're using less funds, um, or I guess, if I can phrase it this way and correct me if I'm wrong, that using the funds compared to building a park is much more affordable because we do have connect, easy access to that park, but I'd, I'd really like to have that defined connection for access point for those residents.
Just let me tell you one more thing. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
The only, the other, the other thing that I would like to tell you is, right now it just stands, we're not passing ownership to the, of the eight acres to the city. So if that's something that you wanna recommend, I will, we'd be happy to donate that property to the city for future use. But that's, that can only be accepted by council.
So, so the only thing that would be able, that, that, that we need to secure, I guess, is, is the access from your subdivision, right?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions?
Uh, no, I, I don't have any que, I'd like to, uh, just make a motion to approve with the security, with, with, with the security to the city that the improvements will be complete, and to secure an access from the subdivision, future.
Do I have a second?
One second.
I have a motion to approve with recommendations made by Andrew Arroyos and second by Enrique Cisneros. I'm gonna take a vote. Um, Ernest Gomez?
Yes.
David Estrada?
Yes.
Arturo La Fuente?
Yes.
Andrew Arroyos?
Yes, ma'am.
Enrique Cisneros?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion carried with five commissioners approved. Item number seven, consider and take action on the final plat approval for East Lake Valley Unit Two, subdivision being all of tracks nine, ten, twelve, thirteen J, thirteen J one, thirteen K, thirteen K one, thirteen L, and portion of tracks block twelve and tracks two H, two G, five A, six A, and seven for a new development.
Good afternoon, commissioners, this is, uh, a final plat for East Lake Valley subdivision. This is another subdivision that is under construction. This is the second part of East Lake Valley, this is right off of Nuevo Weco Tanks Road. And this is the, the area of the land that is currently under construction. Uh, this property will have two hundred and seventy-eight residential lots. It's about forty-two acres, and it'll have two properties that will be commercial, C two general commercial. Let me put it on the screen so you can... I'm, I'm gonna have to put this one in two separate sheets. Here's part one. This is where you can see part of Judge Caldwell Drive. This is gonna be the main road that will connect from the Nuevo Weco Tanks and eventually into Moon Road. And, uh, the two commercial properties will be right here, right along Judge Caldwell, it's gonna be a, a minor collector road. And then here is part two. There. This is where you're gonna have the rest of the, of the lots. I don't know if you have any questions for this final plat? Let me put the aerial map again, so you can see the area on the screen. This is the whole picture. So part one that I just showed you is this little section here on the northernmost part, and then this is the second page that I just showed you. The reason is, the reason they're in separate sheets is because the subdivision is so long, it doesn't fit in one page. And then there's also page three, but page three only contains, um, it only contains the measurements. Let me put it on the screen here, so you can just see it. The measurements are the curves and the little lines that are not big enough to put the numbers on the pan. But everything will be recorded as the final plat. So let me put back the aerial map. Um, I don't know if you have any questions about this one? And also the, the developer is also Mister Escobar, so I don't know if you have any questions for Mister, Mister Escobar, he's, uh, he's still on the line.
I didn't, uh, a question, I didn't get to see the, in a lot of detail, the other plat, the large one that you just showed, showing all the lots.
Sure.
Will there be any, any connector streets into the, that Rijalva subdivision?
Yes. So, this is one of the things that I asked the engineer to include, um, these little stub outs that you see here on the side. Um, but you can't really see or appreciate where the old streets are located. Mister Felix is working on it. Uh, let me just zoom in a little bit, so you can get a better view. They included, uh, a connection here to Rain Cloud Drive, and there's gonna be another connection over here somewhere, and one on this corner right here, to the old Rijalva Gardens. But because the lines are not shown, it's kinda hard to appreciate, but there, there will be access to the older subdivision. Uh, there's gonna be a stub out on this little end right here on the corner for, in case, in the future, um, these people wanna continue subdividing. This road can eventually be connected to unit four of the East Lake Valley, let me put it on the screen here real quick. I apologize, I need to, so here it is. So there's gonna be access here to Albert, Rain Cloud, and there's gonna be of, maybe a little stub out here that will eventually lead to the development that's on the other side, in case this area gets developed in the future. I don't know if that answered your questions, and then this is, of course, this is gonna be the ma, the main road that will be connecting from Moon Road all the way to Nuevo Weco Tanks. When we had meetings with the neighbors, we did have meetings with the neighbors before this was presented, and the developer did mention that most of the traffic from Rijalva Garden, we do expect that they're gonna be using this roadway directly into Nuevo Weco Tanks Road. So this development will not generate additional, or the traffic that's gonna be generated to Moon Road will be minor or minimal. We expect to see most of the traffic to travel north into Nuevo Weco Tanks Road. There's also at the end of the subdivision on the bottom corner, there's gonna be stub outs for, for a future expansion, that will be probably unit five of the East Lake subdivision. Do you have any questions about this one?
I don't have any questions.
Do I have a motion?
If anybody doesn't have any questions, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
I'm sorry? I have a motion to approve made by Andrew Arroyos, second by Mister Enrique Cisneros. I'd like to take a vote. Ernest Gomez?
Yes.
David Estrada?
Yes.
Arturo La Fuente?
Yes, ma'am.
Andrew Arroyos?
Yes, ma'am.
Enrique Cisneros?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion carried with five commissioners approved. Item number eight, consider and take action on the preliminary plat approval for Cendero Flores Village, being all of the tracks four B and four C, Socorro Grant, block twenty-seven for a new development.
Good afternoon, commissioners, this is another subdivision. This one is the preliminary plat. This one is represented by Marvin Gomez. This property is located, I'm gonna put the map on the screen, so you can see it. It's about three hundred feet away from Socorro Road. This is Socorro Road, Silvia, and then this is the proposed subdivision. It's the preliminary plat. This property has about a hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and forty square feet, that's about four acres, and it's owned by Raúl Flores. This property will have fifteen residential lots. They're all classified R one, and it's gonna have a ponding area. This property, according to the flood entrance rate maps, it's located in Zone X. And I'm gonna put the preliminary plat on the screen, so you can see it. Um, this engineer provided, uh, the entire package, uh, they're showing the... Let me put it on the screen. Okay, there you go. This is the subdivision that they're proposing. It's gonna be a total of sixteen sites. Fifteen, fifteen of the lots are gonna be residential in the ponding area. So what they're gonna do here is they're, they're gonna be dedicating additional right of way for the expansion or widening of Silvia Court. They're dedicating an additional twenty feet. On those twenty feet, they're gonna be using it for drainage to allow storm water to run into the ponding area that's gonna be here. Do you have any questions about this one?
Well, the, uh, will that, that, the, the, the easement for that drainage water, will that take in the water for Silvia Court as well? All of, of all of that street, or just for those lots?
That's correct, it's gonna take the storm water from half of the street, because the roadway has a crown design, so half of the runoff will flow into the, the ponding area. Uh, we did verify the calculations provided by the engineer, and it looks like this ponding area that you see here has the capacity for what they're proposing. As you can see, they provided all the, the details right here. And they're also gonna include a rock wall around the ponding area, and an access ramp for public works to be able to drive in and for the maintenance purposes. And then they're also showing, uh, the sidewalks and the curb on this side of the road. So they're gonna be improving all the land that is controlled by them.
And the sidewalks are gonna be built by them also?
I'm sorry?
The sidewalks are gonna be built by them also, correct?
Uh, I'm not sure, it, because it does have a little note that says that they're proposing to build a sidewalks by the builder.
Oh, okay.
Yes. So I don't know, you also have any questions for the engineer, Mar- Marvin Gomez, he's on the line, and he's available for any questions you might have? Mister Gomez?
Yes, sir.
So there's Marvin Gomez, if you have any questions for the engineer?
I don't have any questions, I don't know if anybody else does.
Do I have a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion to approve. I'm sorry?
I'll second the motion.
I have a mo, I have a motion to approve made by David Estrada, second by Enrique Cisneros. I'm going to take a vote. Ernest Gomez?
Yes.
David Estrada?
Yes.
Arturo La Fuente?
Yes.
Andrew Arroyos?
Yes, ma'am.
Enrique Cisneros?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, motion carried with five commissioners approved.
Thank you.
Item number nine, planning and zoning commissioners report.
I don't have anything to report.
I don't have anything to report either.
I don't have anything to.
Item number ten, planning and zoning department report.
The only thing that we have to report today is, in the last meeting, we had a question for the attorney about having a workshop before the next meeting. I wanted to see if you all were okay, if we can schedule a workshop for the following meeting, at least an hour before the meeting starts. Maybe we can get some kind of training on the bylaws. I was reading the bylaws, and it looks like there's some things that we need to take a closer look or have some additional training. So I don't know if you all agree, if you're, if you're okay. Maybe we could have a workshop on the next meeting, an hour before the scheduled regular one.
I'm okay with that.
I would be fine with it also.
Trust me.
Mr. Gomez, are you okay with that? Can we have a workshop?
Yes.
Mr. La Fuente?
Yes, we are.
Okay, Mr. Barry, are you available for a workshop an hour before the next regular meeting? To go over the bylaws? What's the date, Job, that we're looking at? The date will be October the sixth.
Is that right?
Yes. Tuesday, October sixth.
October sixth?
October sixth, that, I guess, at four thirty, right? Yes, sir. Yeah, that's fine. Okay, so we'll go ahead and do that on the next meeting. Before the meeting starts, we're gonna schedule a workshop. That way we can go over the bylaws and other stuff that we need to address. That way we're all informed.
So can you send the agenda, Jonas, and also the information of that meeting, right in the guideline?
We'll provide you the copy of the bylaws. And any questions you might have, that would be a good time to address them. So that's the only thing I have to report.
Okay. Do we make a motion to adjourn, or do we still need to do something else?
Yes, go ahead.
Make a motion to adjourn. I'll second.
I have a motion to adjourn made by Andrew Arroyos, second by Mr. Enrique Cisneros. I'm gonna take a vote. Ernest Gomez?
Yes.
David Estrada?
Yes.
Arturo La Fuente?
Yes, ma'am.
Andrew Arroyos?
Yes, ma'am.
Enrique Cisneros?
Yes, ma'am.
Meeting adjourned at six seventeen PM.
Thank you. Everybody have a good night.
Hi, guys.
Hi, guys.
Good night.